We have a number of things on the agenda tonight. We have a public hearing on a conditional land use. We have a parking appeal. And then a request for a tree preservation variance. And then also some master plan update, I guess. So first of all, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes from last meeting in February? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Craig, do you want to give us a briefing on the conditional use permit?
Sure. If I can, a lot of these items that are on the agenda, there's actually three separate actions that would have to be taken by the planning commission. If I can just describe the entire project and then if there's discussion afterwards, we can talk about those individually. It's just that kind of one ties into the other one, so it would just work out better. The petition in front of the planning commission relates to an amendment to a conditional land use. The petitioners are the Hormel Foundation, Leaning Tree LLC, and the Austin Port Authority. If you look at the property in question, it's located in an R1 residential district. If you look at the surrounding land uses, there's a combination of single-family, residential office, and industrial land uses. Section 1156 gives the planning commission and city council guidelines for whenever there's a need for a conditional land use permit or an amendment to an existing permit. If you look at this property in question, the planning commission has preliminary did a review on this and just give you some details as far as the building itself. The existing building consists of a total gross square foot of 79,538 square feet with a total building footprint of just over 49,000 square feet. There's, if you look on the monitor, I want to point out, there's actually kind of three main sections or I'm not going to say phases because the development is scheduled to occur starting this year, 2014. But if you look on the monitor, the shaded area reflects the existing Hormel Institute. The three different highlighted areas, if you look at the pink area, this is the proposed building expansion that consists of 20 new laboratories. And there's also a change in the off-street parking. If you're familiar with the site or if you've went by and looked at it, currently this whole area consists of an off-street parking area. In the lower right-hand corner is a plan for added off-street parking that would fulfill the elimination of the east parking, current east parking lot. And I'll go into more details as far as the number of stalls that are being proposed for that. If you look in the northwest corner, there's a proposed lecture hall and also additional off-street parking that would be included with that project. If you look at the part relating to the lecture hall, that is a portion of the project that the Hormel Institute is actually looking at potential additional funding resources for that. So it's somewhat unclear as to for sure whether that'll occur this year when the project is planned on starting this, actually June of 2014. But the planning committee has ongoing discussions relating to that. And there has been a kind of a pretty detailed floor plan and layout done for that proposed lecture hall. So with the expansions, if you look at the 20 laboratories, total floor area is just over 63,000 square feet. If you look at the footprint of that building addition, it's 25,538 square feet. The west expansion with the lecture hall consists of 8,300 square feet. So if you look at the total building footprint after the proposed additions, it's just under 83,000 square feet. The site area is 5.37 acres. If you look at the development standards, just about all of these far exceed the minimums. But I just wanted to clarify on the maximum building height, under required, it says 50 feet, 80 feet. It's actually a range of 52 to 80. It's kind of determined per project as it's being reviewed. And what the actual building height would be is 52 feet, which is the same as the existing In the preliminary review, I, at that time, kind of went over some of the preliminary plans and kind of explained what the exterior finishes were of the building. The building addition is actually planned to match the existing facility. If you look at the monitor, starting on the top, we have the south elevation, then it goes to the east, north, and west. Building finishes would be a combination of precast panels, ethos or kind of a stuccle finish, glass. And these mezzanine areas up on top are penthouses. Those are more of a metal clad finish. If you look at the monitor, this is a drainage plan that's been provided, taking into consideration both building additions. The plan would involve, there is an existing stormwater retention pond in the northeast corner of the property, and that is sized adequately to service the entire site that would be west of H Street. Just want to go into a little bit of a portion of the parking lot east of H Street. And again, I'll get into the parking stalls and tree mitigation later. But there is a single-family dwelling that will exist, or the new parking lot will surround that. I don't know if you've been out there, but there's currently actually a newer PVC fence, I'm assuming owned by the property owner, that's approximately five feet in height. But what the engineer has done is put together a design for landscaping. There's some islands that would exist within the off-street parking area. There's also, it's not shown on this sheet, but there's also a berm and plantings that would occur on the east, northeast side of the proposed parking lot to provide a buffer for this home at 1,016th Avenue. This also has a stormwater retention pond that would service the parking area. And those have all been, both ponds have actually been designed to stormwater management If you look at the, this is really hard to see, but I tried to enlarge where the lighting was located for exterior lighting. And I've put in circles here where those lights are being proposed to be located at. All of the lights would be an LED light with strictly downward illumination. The one thing I did notice in the northeast parking lot, it appears that there should probably be an additional light located in that corner. The only light that's shown is actually close to the loading dock on the east side of the Now what I'd like to do is get in a little bit to the off-street parking. In the backup material, there was kind of a summary that I provided in my material. There was a letter dated or submitted from John Erickson or a memo that kind of provided a summary of, staff with the institute actually did a study recently. And this facility is somewhat unique with a lot of the staff people that work there don't drive vehicles. And in that data, there's actually a chart that shows the number of stalls that were utilized at different times of the day and different days of the week. If you look at the most extreme use of that parking lot, there were 77.6 percent of the stalls utilized. If you look at the parking calculations, going by our city ordinance and square footages including the institute expansion and also the lecture hall, there would be a total requirement of 263 stalls. If you look at the off-street parking stalls shown to be provided, that would be at 217 And if you calculated out the stalls needed at the most extreme current usage, you would have a need for 204 stalls. I'd like to also point out that with this off-street parking appeal, there is additional land to be utilized to expand the parking. If there is a need to meet after everything is developed, if there's found to be a need to have additional off-street parking stalls, that the plan would be to develop, further develop this east parking lot to accommodate those number of stalls. I think I reviewed that with the planning commission at last month's meeting where there was kind of dotted line areas where it was planned for future expansion.
Is that the one with the 69 stalls?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. There's actually enough land to accommodate far more than 69 stalls, but in that conceptual design, that's what worked out. I think we'll get into the tree preservation in front of you, before I get to that, I'm sorry, for the lighting on the southeast parking lot. There's an email there from Jones Huggins Smith that addresses, their plan does not show where the exterior lighting would be for that parking lot, but it explains the type of lighting to be utilized. And if there's any action taken on this with the planning commission, I guess I would just recommend that once that civil plan is submitted with the exterior lighting, that it would be up to the city engineer to make his final approval for that. There's also in front of you a summary of planning schedules. One is labeled as the west property. That would be the planning schedule for both new plantings and remove trees from the existing, what I'd call the institute site. And the other site is, or the other sheet is for the southeast parking lot that also addresses tree removal. One thing I want to point out is with that southeast parking lot and the time of the year that we're in, it's very difficult to determine some of the species of the trees that are there. If you look at our city ordinance under the tree mitigation schedule, a lot of the trees that are there are just overgrown. I mean, they won't even qualify for, there's a table in subdivision five of section 1171 that it's actually the tree replacement schedule. And it lists trees, there's two different categories. One category is by height, and those trees range for anywhere from 12 feet in height to 24 feet in height. There's a number of trees in that southeast parking lot that are probably five feet in height. The numbers that I've written down here include every single tree on that property, no matter what size it is. The other category is the diameter of the trunk of the tree. And you know, the minimum size that they even consider is six inches. And there's a number of these trees that are far less than that in diameter. So in going through the tree mitigation schedule, there is a section in 1171, it actually explains that if there are developments that are proposed that exceed the limit and if we can't meet the replacement schedule, then there's a factor that you will calculate out, cash money that has to be paid to the city to do a mitigation planting on another site somewhere as determined by the city of Austin. And I guess in moving forward with that, the city would be in compliance to that code section. But with the schedule that we have in place for this southeast parking lot, we'd like to have it start at actually April of this year, that just stating for the record that the city would be in compliance to that ordinance. And if there's a need for a cash settlement by the developer to pay for that, that they would in fact do that.
So we don't need to talk about a bond or anything like that?
There is a guarantee measure from that. And you know, any provisions within that ordinance would be met. It's just, it's difficult at this time to get into those, I guess we could measure the diameter, I mean, so many of those trees out, I think there's 103 trees total in that southeast parking area. And you know, it's just this time of the year, it's hard to determine exactly what species they are. And I think once we can do that, then I can sure provide a report back to the planning commission too, once that has been completed.
So there's some species that don't count?
Correct. Yeah. Not only species, but the size of the tree. You know, a lot of the trees, the numbers that I'm going to give you here are just little overgrown seedlings, but every tree that's within that development area has been counted on this report that I'm going to give you. So if you look on the monitor, there's actually, again, within the southeast parking lot, there's 103 trees. The trees that have X's on them are the trees that are proposed to be removed, and those would consist of a number of 88 trees. Number of trees saved, which are, I believe, all oak trees, would be 15. What's proposed in the planting schedule, which is right below the list that I made out there, there would be 55 new trees planted. Strawberry plantings would amount to 25, and flower plantings would amount to 750. So the finished development for that southeast parking lot, you'd end up with 70 trees on Are there any questions relating to that?
There's existing housing out there right now. In the, what I see where the parking lot is, are they already bought out or what's happening with them?
The 1606 property?
Well, I'm looking at the proposed lot, and it appears to me that there's several houses out there yet.
Within the southeast parking lot, there is one home.
Just one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there has been discussions.
Is that the white one that Jane?
Yep.
Okay. Two-story, all right.
And the 1004 that's up here in the northeast corner, is this a?
That 10,004, that's actually outside of the scope of the work for this project. But there is a berm planned along the east side of the parking lot with some plantings on it.
Okay. Getting back to that house, what's the prognosis of that?
Well, there's just been, there's been negotiations to acquire that property, but there's a failure to come to an agreement. There's been discussions both by representatives from Leaning Tree. I know John Erickson, he's kind of the construction manager of the project. He's had discussions with them also. They're fully aware of what's being planned here, and I don't know if John wants to comment on that.
Are you allowed to share the sticking points?
It's.
It's really not part of our business.
Yeah. I mean, it may not be.
Yeah. I mean, the way this is shown to be developed meets our development standards.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious, what happens if you don't come to an agreement with her? Is the house just going to sit there or what?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think those are the conversations that have occurred between the development representatives and the property owner. But anyways, this also, it shows a drainage plan where the plant, new plantings are to occur, some of the saved existing trees, how the, some of the islands around those trees will be enhanced. So that is the southeast parking lot area for landscaping. And this is the landscaping plan for the, I'm going to call it the west property or the existing campus. And there is a planning schedule that's included with, in front of your seats there. And if you look at, they've actually, they're looking at removing 10 trees, but there's actually a possibility where those 10 trees will actually be relocated on the property to another location. Six of them are in this back property, our parking lot. That would occur if the lecture hall development occurs, then they would be relocated. Discussions we've had, it would be back in this north area. And there's also four other trees within the parking lot that would be removed. If you look at the tree replacement schedule, they would actually, with the entire development around the perimeter, they're proposing to plant an additional 69 trees. And if you look at the entire site with shrubbery, flowers, you're looking at 543 plantings. This portion of the development is actually within compliance of the tree mitigation plan. For this type of development, you're allowed to, without a tree mitigation plan, you're allowed to remove 47 and a half percent of the trees on the site. So it may very well be, you know, if we look at this portion of the development in the parking lot in the southeast, that once we find or come up with a more defined number as far as the size of the trees, the ones that actually qualify for tree replacement, you know, we may still be in compliance with the tree mitigation plan. But I just can't, I can't answer that right now. And I think if you look at the history of this whole property, back in 2011, there was actually action taken by both the planning commission and the city council to do amendment to our comprehensive plan, to change this to a residential office district. And December of 2013, a petition was approved by the planning commission and the council to rezone it to an R.O. district. In going through that entire process, you know, the intent was to accommodate this proposed That's all I have to report. If there's any questions, there's representatives here from John Erickson, Craig Jones from the institute, and Brian Johnson, he's a consulting engineer from Jones Huggins Smith.
Is there any opposition that you've gotten from anywhere?
No, I have, you know, we've had a number of meetings on this project, and haven't heard any opposition. You know, we've had questions relating to additional phases, you know, when additional properties may be acquired in some of the other surrounding neighborhoods. And you know, that's really not part of our, what we're doing here. And we just direct them to representatives from the Leaning Tree partnership, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Hoyam?
Craig, I know we talked briefly at the last meeting, but what are the plans for pedestrian traffic from the parking lot, southeast parking lot to the institute?
Yep, that's a good question. We have that. If you look on this site plan here, there's a proposed design, the crosswalks are shown here, or the dotted lines going across there. And if you look at what the plan is, is that, this is quite a large intersection on 16th Avenue Northeast and H Street, where this intersection is actually going to be shrunk down. You can see the new curved line on the east side of H Street, how that is going to encroach into the right-of-way more toward the center line. Again, this curve line will be altered some, and I believe this radius on this curve is brought in from what the current existing condition is. And there will also be pedestrian crosswalk signs at all those points.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have that further north on 8th in lieu of that radius turn where that's the widest part of the street? I would think a curve would not be as practical as a straightaway.
I think there's a plan, and John Erickson and Stephen Lang and I kind of went over this with Brian Johnson from Jones Huggins Smith. I believe the plan is to have a stop sign right there. You know, that will stop traffic. I don't know if, there's also another crosswalk showing to the north here. I don't know if Brian can maybe answer that question, he's.
I mean, most of the traffic comes from. I mean, most of the traffic comes from Eighth Street on the north side.
From the north, southbound traffic.
Yeah, I've never seen a car come from...
It would be very limited, at least the existing development to this, there's one block of single-family homes to the south here, and then there's a few more existing single-family homes to the east. But I can, I'll let Brian, if you want additional answers to that question.
That's adequate, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hoyam? Otherwise, I'd like to address some questions to the engineering staff. You'll have to come up and speak after we were entertaining the engineer at this point, then you'll have your opportunity to speak as well.
Oh wait, you said afterwards or right now?
After Mr. Johnson. We have, Mr. Johnson, could you come up and state your name and address for the record and then if you have some statements, you can make some statements, otherwise there, I think there's some questions from the staff or from the board.
Yeah, I can under, partially understood.
Your name and address.
Brian Johnson, I'm a consulting engineer with Jones Huggins Smith Engineers. We've had some limited discussion with the city staff on that intersection there, I think there's ongoing discussions with them. I think we can revisit that a little bit, taking into some of your comments there, based on the traffic study. There hasn't been any formal traffic studies done at that location that I'm aware of, but we can revisit some of the pedestrian movements a little bit. We had talked about possible alternate bids for some increased signage such as flashing lights, things like that, to better accommodate pedestrian traffic and narrowing the distance they have to cross that intersection is something we can revisit too, so.
Has there been discussion on the intersection of Eighth and Sixteenth Avenue? Seems like the people are gonna go from the building the shortest route and that intersection I can see being busier than the south one.
Yeah, and it's, part of the city staff was focused more on the crosswalk to the south, but again, we can revisit that. I think I would tend to agree that the path of least resistance tends to be the route they wanna take, so.
I agree. Yeah, we've got something going across Sixteenth Street, north and south, we don't have anything going from Eighth to Sixteenth and, I mean, I don't understand why we wouldn't, you know? Seems like that would be an obvious point. And also, maybe even where you indicated Craig, that the flashing or the stop sign would go or whatever, if that's an area that people could be standing at or doing whatever, why isn't there a crosswalk there too? I mean, really? I don't know that you can do too much overkill, can you, on safety?
Mr. Erickson, like to comment?
Yeah, I just, and John Erickson and with the Austin Port Authority, and as you look at that intersection, some of the things that we talked about, we're trying to confine that intersection and narrow it down for basically traffic calming, you know, so it would be a smaller intersection, people would have a smaller distance to cross. The idea of having the pond right here was to keep people from going down there, and anytime you put an intersection or people crossing in the middle where there's really not a defined intersection, it catches the people driving the vehicles off-guard. You know, all of a sudden you're crossing in the middle of the street and it's like, oh, I wasn't expecting someone there also. The other idea of having the crossings right down here, the stormwater pond will basically push people to cross there versus crossing farther north. And then as the lecture hall is developed to the west down there, all the people that are going to the lecture hall will be crossing there and walking down the trail that is already built, a ten-foot-wide trail, parallel to Sixteenth and accessing the lecture hall. So we didn't want them going farther north and then coming back there. So that was some of the thoughts that went into the pedestrian crossing, where we put it and basically trying to narrow that intersection down for traffic calming. So that was the efforts that we've made up to this point.
So really, what you hope to do is actually make that the primary or maybe the only crossing?
That would be the designated crossing, so it's at one spot versus multiple spots.
So they won't be taking other routes?
Yeah. So that was some of the thoughts that we put into it, so we knew it was an issue.
Any other comments on that or questions? If not, I have one on the lighting. You mentioned you have downward LED lighting, but is it, have cutoffs so you're not shining? I know you don't have the plan developed for this parking, the southeast parking lot, but I think we need to restrict any lighting onto the adjacent property owners.
Correct, that would be the downward with limited interference with the adjacent home there, that's the intent.
Is this gonna be a lead project?
Not specifically, I mean, it meets all of the drainage and stormwater requirements.
The decision was made not to go for the designation. We have to, with the state bonding dollars, we have to meet certain green standards, but we're not going for the lead designation for that just due to the cost associated with it, but we're not ignoring those sustainability-type, you know, efforts we can make for it, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Erickson or Mr. Johnson? Thank you. Do you have a statement, Mr. Erickson?
Just, I made a couple notes here. As far as the bond, you addressed that, and really, the Austin Port Authority, the City of Austin is going to be the one responsible for it because it's our building, and I think we had that discussion, but since the Port Authority is an arm of the city, asking the city to provide a bond to the city didn't seem like it made sense in this case. Mr. Skokey had some questions regarding that property owner, and we've had discussions with them as far as what landscaping, what buffers we could build into the project that would make sense. So we've had those discussions with them and I think we're on track with that property owner there. Ultimately, we see that property being acquired and so that buffering would go away and we would actually add parking there, so that would be some of our additional parking that we felt we hated to build more parking to the east and then all of a sudden build parking where this house is when we acquire that house at some time in the future, so. So that was some of our thoughts that have gone into that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Gentlemen in the rear, would you like to come forward and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Javier Soto. My address is eleven oh seven fifteen Avenue Northeast. A few questions regarding, let's see, as a neighbor in the area, is this gonna interfere with our traffic? I mean, are you guys gonna ever stop the traffic during the construction?
The, if you look at the road designs for some of the public roadways in that area, we have done recent traffic counts out on Sixteenth Avenue and Eighth Street, and those counts show twenty-two hundred and fifty daily trips, you know, with vehicle traffic. The width of those roads there will accommodate up to ten thousand daily trips, so we feel that the public roadway system is adequate to handle. I mean, like I said earlier, a lot of the employees of that facility, and I don't know if Craig could comment on that, but a large number of them either use the transit system or buses or bikes, and I'm sure you've noticed the existing parking lot on the east side of the building there. Very seldom is there, it's probably, well, I think the study shows seventy-five percent utilized, so.
But the traffic, I mean, the road will always be open, I mean, you're not gonna shut down.
During construction, is your concern? During construction?
Yep, during construction, yep.
It'll be staged in a way that it won't...
Always be access to get to my house.
Correct, yep.
And also, the depth of the pond, I have some kids and a little concerned, was how deep is that gonna?
Brian, you have a depth, is it three feet?
Okay, right. I mean, it's always a concern, you know, if you have kids and the parking lot is not gonna be guarded or anything like that, security guard?
No.
No, okay, just like the old one.
Will a pond be fenced?
We don't have plans to fence it, typically we don't. What we've been told from a legal standpoint is if you put a fence around it, you're kind of admitting that there's a danger there, so it's kinda like the lake, you don't put a fence around the lake just because there's a danger there. So at this point, we don't have plans to put a fence around.
And the roads, I guess, I don't know if it'll be addressed to you or the City of Austin, is they're gonna redo the road? Is it gonna be redone after they cut out all them holes to the water lines now that there's low spots in there after it's settled, I guess, and...
There's ones that have settled already or...
Oh yeah.
A lot of that might occur too at this time of the year with the frost in the ground where it reacts to the frost differently than soils that have been there for a while. I don't think, the only plan to do anything with the road would be where it's gonna be actually made narrower, that would kind of lead to your...
Okay, yeah, we're just looking at that here, yes.
Yeah, and reason for that is try to slow down the traffic in that area, which should probably help some things.
Okay, but, so, I mean, I, there's some areas here, well, it's not on, I guess, but there's some areas by, or just some low spots, and when we drive there, you know, you feel that thing, just a concern, I mean, if it was gonna be redone.
John might have a better idea of, I don't think there's any plans to do anything there that I'm aware of, or I don't even know if some of those street cuts were temporary patches and I couldn't tell you.
It's been patched, but, I mean, now there's low spots, you know, that's just a concern that I had.
Regarding the low spots, I'm sure the city will come in and patch those up and they'll probably seal code at once all the utility cuts have been made, and there's been a number of utility cuts there. As far as the construction impacts, the first thing that you're going to see done is this parking lot will be built. And that schedule right now is for that parking lot construction to start in May and be complete prior to the groundbreaking occurring for the actual institute, because the institute expansion is gonna take out the parking lot and displace all of the cars that are parking there. So first thing will be happened is the parking lot construction and then the construction on-site. The contractor, our goal is for the contractor to stage all of their construction from the actual institute site, so you'll see no impact to the public or very little impact other than delivery of materials for that as far as impacting the road, so that's our plan right now.
And what's the plan for potential completion date?
The parking lot, the first asphalt lift on there is June first, and we'll probably put the last lift on probably in the fall in case any settlement would occur. The actual institute, we're looking at completion about fifteen months from groundbreaking, so.
August first to fifteen?
August first to fifteen, I was about.
We're holding you to that.
Don't hold us to that.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that, Mr. Hoyam?
Just a couple things, I just asked the, any action taken by the Planning Commission on the three items that, especially the conditional use, that references made to those provisions in eleven fifty-six subdivision five, I think there's five bullet points there. And the action taken by the Planning Commission on the conditional land use is in action and then there's a fifteen-day appeals period. If you look at the off-street parking appeal and the tree mitigation, that is actually a recommendation to the City Council for those two items.
There's no other questions from the commission, could I have a motion on the conditional use permit? We'll start there. This will be an approval or a denial for a conditional use permit?
For the construction of the addition? Can I ask you for some clarification before we do that? On the, I'm looking at this as three different motions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the first one was subsection eleven, or City Code Section eleven point five six, and then the other one was subdivision five?
Subdivision five is a portion of eleven point fifty-six.
Right, but is that only for the parking appeal and the tree preservation or is that for all of them?
That's, would be strictly for the conditional land, or the conditional use permit amendment.
Okay, and you were talking about the five points, so you were talking about subdivision five, the geographical area involved, blah, blah, blah?
Correct, and I've made some notes behind each one of those conditions, at least what staff thought, you know, as far as...
I thought that's what you were alluding to, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I'm ready to make a motion then if that's the case. I would make a motion to approve the existing conditional land use request pursuant to eleven fifty-six subdivision five. I believe that looking at the five different areas, the geographical area involved, whether the use will depreciate the surrounding area, the character of the surrounding area demonstrated need for such use, and whether proposed will cause odor, berm, dust, blah, 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 I believe that those have been met sufficiently and therefore I would ask for an approval.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Spanour.
Can I ask for clarification? Did Commissioner Spanour say existing or that we would amend the existing?
Well, the question is for an amendment to an existing conditional use, so that's what I would propose, but thank you for clarifying that.
Then I would second her motion.
Second by Commissioner Wallace. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Entertain a motion on a recommendation for a parking, an off-street parking appeal.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the off-street parking appeal as presented.
Motion to recommend by Commissioner Keim.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now entertain a motion, a recommendation motion for a variance on the tree mitigation.
Okay, can I ask for some clarification on this one? In light of the comments that Mr. Erickson made about the Port Authority taking charge of the project initially, and then we were talking about if there was a mitigation fee required, that that would be paid by the...
Yeah, that's somewhat complex, 'cause the, I don't know if it's been exactly determined yet, but right now, Leaning Tree owns the property.
So would it be...
And it would actually be a partnership between Leaning Tree, the Port Authority, and the Hormel Foundation. So I guess if there's, if there is in fact a need for this variance, you know, and I think I said in the presentation that if there's, once we finalize those numbers in qualifying trees, existing trees, if there's a need to do, obtain funding for a forestation plan, that, you know, we would be in compliance, there's a specific factor, it's so much per the size of it, I think it's twenty-five dollars per inch of the trunk of the tree or whatever, and, you know, we would document that, and if there's a need, that would be, we have to comply with that, it's not an option, so.
Mr. Erickson?
I don't think the Port Authority would have any issue with us being responsible for that payment as part of the project cost if there is, I mean, it's the Port Authority's parking lot that, so, we would have no issue with making that a condition of the Port Authority being responsible for that payment, that dollar value.
At this point, it looks like there's a good possibility that the variance won't even be necessary.
That's correct, and truthfully, we wanna put as many trees and make it as inviting as possible to start with anyway, so I would probably see as that we'll probably exceed that and the variance is a moot point.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve a variance for the tree mitigation, or the tree, the tree mitigation variance.
Recommend.
Yeah, recommend to the City Council that they allow the tree mitigation variance with the caveat that if a fee is required in the event... the caveat that if a fee is required in the event that the variance is necessary, that that fee would then be taken care of to replace whatever trees were necessary according to the, according to the ordinance.
Okay, a motion to recommend the variance for the tree mitigation has been made by Commissioner Wallace.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skolicki. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Hoyam, do you want to talk about the downtown master plan?
Yeah, I just wanted the Planning Commission to be aware of, there's two or three substantial developments that are being considered for the downtown area. In 2005, the City Council, and I think it was reviewed by the Planning Commission too, when the Main Street project was originally developed, we also had a master plan done at that time to kind of direct in going through the revitalization of the downtown area. With these proposed developments that are coming up, staff thought it was wise to either amend that master plan to address some of these potential developments, or either that we, also in our capital improvement plan, there's funding that has been approved by the City Council for both 2014 and 2015 to update our comprehensive plan. So, initial meetings are kind of taking place with staff and various parties involved with those developments, and as things proceed along with that, I'll update the Planning Commission.
Thank you. If there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion for a German.
Some of...
Motion by Commissioner Nelson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.